Yeah, thanks everyone for coming along. Um, it's, yeah, I presented to the Queenstown Lakes District Council, as I done my lap in the track around Central Otago. I presented there with six people. So I think in Macarthur and Southend, oh no, this is in Macarthur City. Um, you guys can be proud that you're getting active and gonna hold your council to account and make sure these guys stand up on your behalf. So congratulations to all of you guys. It's not gonna happen until New Zealanders say no to this bullshit. So Deputy Mayor Nobby Clark has been good enough to come along here and front up and accept these on our behalf, on your behalf. So I'd just like to read out the cover letter that we wrote to go with it. Hopefully I've got the right one because I've been changing dates and councils and mucking around and there's probably a fair chance I'll bug it up. Alright, so dear Mayor Tim Shabold and Invercargill City councillors, Granswell take this opportunity to present the signatures of the Invercargill City ratepayers and residents requesting that Invercargill City Council discontinue any further funding of local government NZ and hold a binding referendum on the issue of Three Waters. It's obvious from the members at the meeting held on the 9th of June 2022, the Invercargill Working Men's Club, as well as feedback from community members in the past, that the Invercargill City community does not accept that the democratic process of engagement on Three Waters was carried out. LGNZ entered into the heads of agreement with the Crown in July of 2021, which committed LGNZ to the government's Three Waters proposal. LGNZ failed to preserve the rights of individual councils to reach their own position as LGNZ was clearly in total support of the proposed reform and the case for change before proper engagement was carried out. This resulted in little or no public engagement, either from the ICC or the leadership of LGNZ. As a result, we believe this ratepayer financed organisation has not acted in the best interests of the people of this region and possibly the biggest issue to face local government in 30 years. And LGNZ is no longer fit for purpose. As this process was neither democratic nor transparent, we call on the mayor and councillors to set a date for a public meeting within the next three weeks to discuss these issues. Councillors would publicly state their positions on the two issues of Three Waters reforms and the defunding of LGNZ and a vote be taken. So to clarify, our request is for an ensuing binding referendum for the Invercargill City ratepayers and residents on the issue of the Three Waters reforms and for council to vote on the defunding of LGNZ. We look forward to your response sincerely, Bryce McKenzie and Laurie Peterson. So I'll hand this over to Nobby now. Um, we've got 570 signatures, we just counted up for the, yeah, the one on the referendum, um, which Nobby suggested was probably one of the biggest submissions he's ever seen, or petition, sorry.
Um, so I think you probably know my view quite well on Three Waters. Um, and I'm not very professional to say this, but it's a crap shit. The government is taking a sledgehammer to what is very simple for them. And that's the underfunding on infrastructure because some councils have decided to spend the money that should be going to infrastructure on other things. We're not one of them. Our council's done very, very well. And I oppose to Three Waters on that plank that we should get in to an entity in the South Island and subsidise the councils that haven't done well, that have taken their money elsewhere. Uh, we've got the highest financial rating anywhere in the country as a council. We have very good reserves for money and we're very, very conservative the way we spend money, unlike some other councils. So I don't see why my rates would go to subsidise Queenstown, Wanaka, Selwyn, Southend and the likes. Um, but the issue is the referendum that you're asking for will not achieve anything. And I'll tell you why, I'm not opposed to it. Um, there are two or three levels that have gone wrong. First level is that the government, our left wing government, made a decision some time ago that they would ask council for information about their own council. Like, what were they dealing with? They gave us an assurance that we could opt in or opt out at any stage. Um, and they asked us for information. They said, don't consult with your community yet. We'll give you the questions back to your answers and we'll give you an information pack that you can take out, which is a balance ledger, to talk to your community. Now, we all know now, of course, Mahuta and her tribe, um, have mandated it. So they did that about two months before they gave us that undertaking. So that was pretty rude on their behalf. Um, and what they did was they just, they would enact that into law. So any referendum we do will not change that. And I'll tell you, we should be lobbying a bit later on. But asking for a public meeting, um, so that people can be formed is an important thing. And it's no secret that I put up a motion about six months ago, asking our council to do exactly that. It got lost on a split vote. And if you go on the records, you'll see who voted which way. Um, and subsequent to that, I also put another motion up saying that our council should join the breakaway group. That's the 31 councils that have gone away. And again, that was lost as well. Um, so there's only so much I can do and that's not me defaulting on you people. I'll continue to advocate for stopping the Three Waters. The other key issue is where is the Achilles heel of this government? And it is their list MP. So if you go back into politics at the last election, National got 26 elector seats, which was abysmal, but they only got the party vote in two of the electorates in the country. So that tells you, you go out to Gore or you go out to the McKenzie country where normally farmers would vote two ticks blue. They didn't, they voted blue and red. And I think the power is to pull that party vote back. That's what's gotten them the majority at the moment. And that's where they're extremely nervous. And you'll notice recently that the minister and cabinet have been putting through the Three Waters legislation, but they've delayed it and delayed it and delayed it because they know it's getting really messy for them. So that's where your lobbying needs to be, at those list MPs. We've got one here in the city, she's a Labor MP. She sits on the select committee that's dealing with all the legislation going through, which is Liz Craig. Nothing personal against her, she's a lovely woman. But the bottom line is, she's the person we should be lobbying. Because she is the one that will make some of the key decisions going forward. So I can't help you other than give you information, but it won't change where the government's going. They are hell bent on it. And I can't start today on hi pua pua because I won't be able to maintain my language if I do. Which is the whole issue of current governance. And so, um, it's a sadly indictment on our, on our democracy when we can't resolve that in a sensible way. So, uh, yes, I will take the petition you put forward. It's the biggest I've seen in recent times and that's going back six years. Um, but again, do your lobbying in the right place. Know where the Achilles heels of the Labor Party and Green Party are. Um, because that's, that's the way to get to change that electoral vote. And for those that went to the meeting in Invercargill recently, you'll see I did a videotape. And alright, we've got a reporter doing a strip job. Um, I did a videotape, couldn't actually get there. And it's really important that you know some, if you've seen that or you've gone on the Mike's website and watched it recently, it gives you a bit of understanding about some of the rubbish that the government's selling this project on. And every single time I raise issues about economy of scale, the structure they're gonna have in, how many water engineers they need and how much work can physically get done out in the outlying areas, the rural areas, I just draw a blank. And the management that's funding that's gone away on promotion somewhere else. So they're really struggling now to get across the line. So I appreciate you coming in today and it's lovely summer weather down here. Benefit of the rain is that Orkans don't want to come live here. So that's actually quite a good thing. Push our house prices up, um, but you need to target the right people. And, and I'll try and get us to do some more consultation again and get some public meetings going again so we, as councillors, can stand up and say it. Our council seems to be split fairly, fairly much down the middle. There are those that traditionally support the government and then I'm in the other camp that says, hey, I can see through all this, it's not right. So, um, and the biggest issue for me is the issue of fresh water versus drinking water. So you don't have to be a rock scientist to work out that we only drink 2% of what we put through the treatment plant. Why the hell would we bloody treat all that water only to flush it down towards it, have it in the shower, water your gardens, do it in your washing machines? So for those, especially in the rural areas, there's gotta be a smarter way of doing business. Don't treat all the water. Stock don't care less when it comes out of a river or comes from a treatment plant. Just do what you need to drink. If we do that, we'll find a different solution to it all, as they do in some of the overseas ones. So, yeah, that's all I've got to say.
What about local government in New Zealand?
Yeah, well, don't start me on that. Um, well, I, I struggled with that and I was very vocal at several meetings with them. We've got some mayors around South Island who are very much in favour of local government, but they sold us out, they really did. It's a little bit like, you can, you can, you can go back into the, you can, you can go back into the eighties when unions got into bed with employers to, uh, to do their, to do their work on behalf and they lost a lot of members because of it. Because they lost their ability to advocate. And unfortunately, uh, the, the government through the Department of Internal Affairs lulled, um, Local Government New Zealand into signing a heads of agreement. And one of it has a very strong clause that says, thou shalt not criticise the government on this issue. Well, if you're silly enough to sign it up, you expect to lose members. So I don't have any faith. I haven't been to any local government conference since. There's one on today in Wollongong, which I would normally go to, but on principle I won't go because I just find it farcical. So, uh, you know, sometimes you have to walk, walk the talk instead of just talking.
Thanks, Nobby, you're welcome to take your questions.
Yep, um, have, have you to take questions if you, if you want? Oh, thank you, no questions.
There's your moment if you wanna have a say.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to, so.
Sure.
Here's a ratepayer of Southland District Council, I am trying to find the recording. That the community of Ohi, 10 years ago was facing a $4.9 million sewage upgrade. And our council have been kicking their can around and now you Invercargill ratepayers are gonna have to start stumping up to subsidise a lot of infrastructure in Southland District Council that has not been maintained. And I object to that, that the Invercargill ratepayers who are predominantly, there's a lot of pensioners having to pay for something that has been paid by Southland District Council. But we've spent $14 million on a cycle truck, $25 million in a finance company and now they're spending over $13 million on their office. But they can't build a bridge, but you're welcome to pay for our sewage.
So as a, as a personal response to that, I'll cover off quite a few things you raised there. I can't speak on behalf of District Council, it's a district council. I know they have issues. Uh, I can't speak on behalf of the District Council. That's not my territory as it were. Um, it's public knowledge that they have issues around infrastructure and that they also have issues around bridges. So one of the things that is heading towards us as councils is that I will forecast for you that within the next three years, that government will centralise councils. So I'm picking that in Southland where we currently have four councils, the regional council will remain where it currently does environmental issues and will pick up climate change because everybody wants something done in that area. And I think Gore, Invercargill and the district will actually combine into one issue. So for those ratepayers in the city, you need to be aware of what you've raised is that some of the issues that currently sit in the district will become our collective issues. Hence, from a city perspective, we need to get some stuff done in the next three years so we don't lose our capacity to do that.
Nobby, just like to raise the point that, you know, like we're asking council to, to do things, but we want to make it quite clear that we want to take these votes out of your hands because this, this is our vote. And, and the people here need to start making some very clear decisions. Um, we're unhappy about LGNZ, we're unhappy with the fact that we've been told that we can't do a binding referendum. We're really unhappy with the fact that everywhere we go, we're told that we can't do anything. Um, this has already been predetermined. It's like Winston Churchill saying, oh well, it doesn't matter, I can't do anything now, it's too late. And we are asking our councils to step forward and fight for us and, and to make it very clear to the government that we're just on a bar of this. And if all of these councils could, could join up on that, we could, we could make a powerful force. And we want the vote about whether our rates pay LGNZ. And we want the vote about whether we do a binding referendum here to say to the government, we're not doing this, we, we're just not having a bar of it, it's wrong. And if, and if all of those mayors and deputy mayors and the councillors that are on our side step forward, we'll be the wind behind them because that's what we're here to do. You know, we're here to give you support and to support the people that want to support us in what we know is, is the right move. So we need to make that top seed.
So two ways of, two ways of having a vote on that issue. We could have a referendum here tomorrow, they could say 100% stay out of Three Waters. It won't be worth the paper trip on, I just wanna tell you that because government is already ignoring all the advice we're giving them. They are hell bent on going down the track they're going. So the ballot box for them is the way you hurt them. The other issue is, should we stay in Local Government New Zealand? Should we be part of the, um, breakaway group, the Council for Democracy? Which is really interesting because Mahuta recently said, well, there's only 31 councils in there of 67, so that's not a majority. Well, what she doesn't count conveniently is we're not in there, but half our councillors are opposed to Three Waters. So when you start totting it up, you've probably got about two thirds of elected members in the country and that's thousands of elected members are opposed to Three Waters. So she's very convenient on that. Um, and the last issue is, should we consult with the community? And I think that's long overdue. I've tried all three of those areas, um, and not got support, but I'm happy to put that up again. But just be mindful, you'll have to watch the way people vote because we've got an election coming up and there may be some energy from people realising how many people we've got on the petition to think, actually, I can't afford to ignore 600, 700 people in our local community that are saying that they want a say on Three Waters. So I'll put it again, um, but I need support to be able to do that. No, 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 be mindful. I might have support when it comes to the election time, but the issue is, I need the support around the table. That's where it needs to be. So we've got 15, 15 people around the table, a mayor, 12 councillors and two mana fenno reps. They are the ones that will decide, they've already cast their votes previously, but I'm happy to put that up again because we can't put it up again and say that it's become more of an issue for the community and we've got more information now and we should, we should readdress the issue. If they say no, then you'll know exactly where to vote at the next election.
They should go in front of us and then they have to be pretty brave to turn the, turn the eyes against all the people that are saying it's a load of shit.
We'd like to see that vote public.
Oh no, those votes were public last time. They, they were run through a committee last time, so it'll, it'll be there. Um, it's probably, if I, if I put them up, you're probably looking two or three weeks away. Um, but it'll allow councillors to declare their hands, I mean, you already know where I stand on the issue. Um, I, I wouldn't personally have got out of LGNZ at this stage. I think they're very much on the back foot, but I certainly would have joined the alternative group, which is what I put up. And I would have gone out for consultation and, um, and put up what we're doing. Because some of the stuff that the government throws out and those stupid bloody adverts they had with the muddy water and what have you, it's just absolute fallacy, it really is. I mean, I've travelled probably 40 countries overseas and our drinking water's better than any of them. Um, so this thing that, you know, we're all gonna die of some botulism or something because we don't have an improved water system, just a problem on the radio. Yep, somewhere, yeah, I'm with you.
I'll come up and stand with you because I think you're with us.
Question, Nobby?
Well, I don't need some director who would down it over time, surely.
I wanna say how we appreciate this man in that he unchallengably is prepared to state his position. This is what the nation of New Zealand started with. It was a group of people who took a placement. I'm a farmer and I come from right on the boundary of Southland and Otago. But most of the water off one of our farms sheds into the Matarra through the Mocharita and the upper reaches. I'm proud to say that, um, we support this region. That's, most of our, um, production comes down into Southland. We need strong representatives. And if the Mayor Tim is having a look or other councillors, I say to you in all sincerity, go back and have a look at where you've come from and look at your office, the office that you hold. Mayor Tim, I want to say I thought of you as a most amazing man. You're in your senior years, but please give us decency and reconsider your place. The office of mayor, we have respected. And Tim, I have to say, I have respected you. But we need a vote. We need the exercising of two votes that the mayor has at a point of a locked vote. He not only has one as a councilman, he has one as the mayor. This is so serious for our region that where I am, water, land, the air we breathe is an important part. If there's a lock-in through race or creed, and that's what this is all about, and if the ownership goes into a race or creed and you've got a percentage of cost, your food in the cities of New Zealand will go that way. And our ability, even across New Zealand as we're talking, there are people in the upper North Island who are saying, we cannot afford to take the food into Auckland. Those talks are happening amongst our agriculturalists. Growing spuds at $400 a tonne and having a margin of $50 a tonne and seeing them sold for 1,500 plus a tonne, growing onions might cease. And they're one of the most used vegetables over our country. I want the councillors in Invercargill and the region to stop and think, this is an asset grab, it's an asset, water. We cannot function in our gear room. This, we do not have access to water on this three options. Waste water? Do you know, they've asked us to put water into the rivers that's cleaner than what's in the rivers? What nonsense. On our farms, they showed us in a national TV exercise that we were sharing and drinking dirty water. This Shambles, said our Minister Mahuta, the lady with, um, the whatever. You know what, who I mean? Do you know who I mean? And the lady who, um, worked in a shop, um, what was she, fish and chips? Uh, what's her name, Air, Air Prime Minister?
Um, what do you call her?
Cindy. Cindy, uh, no, just Cindy, sorry, out of respect. I respect that office of Prime Minister, but I do not respect those people unless they humble themselves and come back and say, sorry, we did wrong. I got out of the leaders in, uh, Alcluther that they weren't happy. And they said, oh, there'd been an apology. That apology needs to be on national news and every paper in the country. If they want us to listen and give us some dignity, give us some dignity. Because I go around the corner and there's a banner and there's a banner of a people that we love, the Merrick people. Over here, there's an emblem. I want to say, we as a people love the people who came here before us. Those that came before us, we respect them and they love, and we love them. We are the men of the farms. If the cities are not strong and if we can't bring our food in and supply the incomes, you watch the demise of this city. You watch these ideologies that our government have. You go and look where our Minister of Finance is associated. You look at our different ministers, Cuba, Venezuela, Zimbabwe. I'm saying to you, this must stop. The people of New Zealand, if any of you are hearing, this must stop or we are going to become a country of the past. And I say to you, it's time that Southland arises and that we have no shame to take back or go back to where we come from and our founding fathers. Nobby, you would make one of the founding fathers in how you speak. He has a conscience and a love for us as a people. I want to say that I've been a bit noisy and I hope you hurt me at the back because my heart is for this nation and these people. We are one people, we are one nation and we're unto God.
I won't be that noisy. Um, so, um, so a couple of things to consider. Um, we had quite a severe drought in Southland in recent times, as you know, worse than about 50 years. And the stupidity of the Three Water setup, oh, I'm sorry, the stupidity of the Three Water setup recently and the drought was.
Nobby, could you come here because you're amongst friends?
No, 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 I've gotta stay here with the media, they're my friends. Um, the stupidity of it all was, if you looked around the rural area of Southland, you would have seen that farmers were really struggling with water for stock. And we had these bureaucrats said, oh, you can't take it out of a local river because it's not treated. Well, you know, it defies any logic. Um, so as I said before, I'll put up two motions. The local government in New Zealand one can wait. I'll put up a motion that we consult with the community again and I'll put up also, um, the issue of joining the breakaway group. The issues that you need to watch is, I need to have four other councillors or mana fenno reps vote with me to get it on the table again. So to put it on the table because we've already voted on it, I've gotta have a third. And I've tried before, but I'll do it again next couple of weeks. And you can see whether I get the votes and if I don't, I'll let the media know.
Did you guys at the back hear that? And he needs four councillors and you vote have gotta go and petition. Nobby will give you a list of the people that need petition.
You, you can, you can look at the, the list of councillors and the mayor and the two mana fenno reps. So for me to put an issue back on the table, I've gotta have a third because we've already voted on it once before. Otherwise, you can just keep putting it on the table every single meeting till you've got numbers. And so to do it, I've got what they call relegate, which means I've gotta have a third. I've already tried to do that on one other issue and I fell short by one vote. So I'll put that up in the next couple of weeks to the appropriate committee and try to readdress those issues. And we'll, and I'll, I'll email my colleagues and express the wishes of this group and say to them, hey, you don't put your name on the, on the piece of paper going forward, it'll be public knowledge that you haven't.
Yes.
And we're two hops, we're two hops away from election, you can play the electoral card if you want to.
So Nobby's looking for a representative who'll put their name on a vote so that this will come up again in the council, in the chambers.
No, 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 no. We've got 15 people that vote at council, 15. The mayor, 12 councillors and two mana fenno reps. For me to readdress this issue because I've already put it up once before, I need to have five signatures, so me plus four from that group of 15 to say, yes, we'll put it on the table again. Doesn't mean a vote that way, but allows it to be discussed. And so the first issue is the issue of public consultation. It's gone beyond holding off Mahuta to give us information anymore. We know where she stands, we know what track they're going down. The legislation's already going through the House. So we should bring those issues back out to the minor committee, not just out to the ground soul group, which is what happened, uh, last week. Second issue is, I'll put up yet again the issue of joining the breakaway group and see whether I get the numbers there. And again, you will transparently see who's voting which way because I can call for what they call a division. And the division means it's not a matter of saying all those in favour say aye, because that's what they normally say. A division means each councillor has to put their hand up and show which way they're voting. And that goes on the record. Yep, transparent.
And that's the council meeting you go to?
Yeah, well, you don't need to go there. You just need to have the media there because they'll, they'll, they'll tell you very quickly overnight who's voted which way.
The media with you here now?
Yeah, we've got three, three major media sources, not in any priority order. Southland Times or Strut, have an online website, um, OTT slash Express. And Mike and his team over here right in front of me.
What's on Imbiss?
It's all on What's on Imbiss. So they tend not to gatekeep, they don't have any leanings either way. Um, although Mike and I have some arguments sometimes about some things. Um, but you'll find the results out real quick.
Wonderful.
Yep.
Thank you.
All we're asking for is the democratic process. And there is enough people here to represent the people of Invercargill that these guys are not happy that these people are working on their behalf. The people that aren't making a voice don't actually know what's happening? So the reason they're not actually angry about what's going on because they have no bloody idea of what's actually going on in their town. And that's sort of part of the job is to let them know and consult them and find out what they actually think because it's all well and good because we know what's going on and we're not happy about it. But these people in town have no bloody idea what Three Waters is, it's Three What? They have no clue what the government's trying to push through. So they need to find out what it is. It's up to us and up to these guys to go out there and actually let them know what it actually means and do something about it.
Yeah, I think another thing is that while we're talking about Invercargill today and here with Nobby, um, we're very disappointed in all the councils south of the Waiteki really, uh, that really haven't stood up against Three Waters and haven't actually bought into, um, what's it called, communities for...
Local democracy.
Local democracy, yeah. It's very disappointing, I think, um, you know, not just in Invercargill, so, yeah.
Does it mean we can't be on the winning side?
Yeah, just one final colleague for you. And this is, this is not me politicking, um, but Three Waters has a, a, has a horrible tale that they haven't told you about. So, um, these water entities they're setting up, we've got one for the South Island, don't have any incomes as such. They, and so everything that they do going forward for the next two, uh, 10 years... And so everything that they do going forward for the next ten years, we will pay for. So my number crunching says that my rates are about three thousand a year. A third of those are Three Waters. So that's a thousand dollars in lay terms. Within the next eight years, I'm predicting that will be two thousand.
Or they will borrow from...
So anybody that's sitting around on National Super, and I'm on National Super as well, or sitting around on a low income, or on flexible hours, or with restricted incomes, or a solo parent that doesn't have a lot of discretionary money, doubling water rates in the space of eight to nine years is going to be some serious pain.
They intend to sell it, actually. They intend to sell the water to supers some investment.
No, no, no. I heard one of my learned colleagues here talk before about ownership, and ownership's not your big issue. It's a little bit like, we used to run, city used to run the buses in town. And now we contracted out. And when you talk to people about buses, they don't care who owns the bus, as long as the bus arrives on time and doesn't cost them any more money. And that's the same for Three Waters. I don't care whether we own or don't own the assets, so long as we have control. Because if you don't have control, you have nothing. And that's what we're losing with the way the government's setting it up.
Can I say something?
No.
Because tactic I know happened. I am from Romania, and the government sell the energy to France. And soon they sell it, one month later, it was double price. People are on the street because they can't pay the energy. So it happened, trust me.
So the government has built in an inability to sell the water entity. So that's our South Island water entity. So by law, unless another government changes that, you can't unsell that. But hang on, I haven't finished yet, but what they haven't covered is, is the issue of bottling water, and who gets the royalties for that? And I'll leave you to ponder who will gain the water royalties when that occurs.
I don't know if many of yous are aware of section one thirty of the Local Government Act. Nobby, could you give us a wee brief rundown on that? You will be aware of what that is like.
So in lay terms, it prevents us from selling off assets. But selling off assets and changing ownership is a little bit different, and that's where the government gets us a little bit. So if we own this building and we wanted to sell an asset, we have restrictions in the Local Government Act. But, you know, you don't have to think too hard ahead to say, well, if we amalgamate the councils, the councils could very well be in this building, so the ownership would change. So it's really to protect your selling off your assets to the private sector is where the Act comes from. But this is not going to the private sector, it's going to a government-owned entity.
And they do whatever they want.
Yes, I understand that, you can change laws at any stage.
Exactly.
The noisy farmer's got his hand up again. No, no, they've said to me not to give you the microphone.
When you've got a soft voice, you need one of these. Right, what I'm going to say is, Nobby is going to throw his hat in the ring again to be elected. He never talked to me about this, but he can play me later. The fact of the matter is, when a man is standing for what's right and the virtues that he strongly believes in, he hasn't been bought, we owe it to him as folk here to stand with him firmly. And I say to the people of Immacaral, let's open up our section so that he can put, what do you call them, a hoarding? A hoarding. Let's go strong so that this man gets the highest vote of any time, so that he's validated, you know? Is that the word? Nobby, I wish you all the best, mate. I am a little bit noisy, but you can't help it when you're in the wind with the dogs. I think this government, they need the dogs to go on them, and they're not my sheepdogs, they're the hunting dogs. They've let us down. And I'll just show you something. What colour's that? I want to give you a tip, if you're going shopping, like I did, I bought that shirt there, it's a great farm shirt, I've about worn it out. I found that blue shirts are much cheaper than they used to buy. In the shop, I bought a blue shirt, and then I bought a red shirt, and I said, why are the other shirts so expensive? And they said, people were sick of National being let down. And I'm a farmer, and I'm saying, straighten up, National! And Labour, red shirts show Labour, don't they? So I've got a red and a blue shirt, go and buy the cheap clothing that should be much more expensive than we wear with pride. I wear it today because I'm proud to be a farmer. May God bless you and keep you. And Nobby, may you win.
Thanks, Peter. We've got to move over to Southland District Council on Fourth Street, so, Nobby, we certainly appreciate it.